Roll call, please.
Mayor Hasselbrink?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dobie?
Here.
Councilmember Chirco?
Here.
Councilmember Nofolda?
Here.
All right, if you could stand with me and join us with the pledge of allegiance that Mayor Protem Dobie will be leading, and I'll finish with the invocation.
All right. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious heavenly Father, as we come before you tonight to do the business of the city, we just ask that you give us wisdom, give us guidance on how best to make decisions. We ask that you just bless all of our residents and our businesses that pour so much into our day-to-day lives. We ask that you protect our first responders and our frontline workers from any health or any danger. Let's call this in your precious name, amen. Don't sit down. If council could come join me down front. All right, tonight, we get to recognize the softball team finally. Yay! There you go, wow! Los Alameda's 2022 Versi softball team finished second place in the Sunset Surf League and continued their season on the road to the playoffs. In the first round, they played at Grand Terrace and won 6-3. Then they had a home game against Beaumont and squeaked out a win 1-0. The Cordovale sent them to Camarillo where they won in a slugfest 10-7. The semifinals were at home against the highly-ranked Oaks Christian. And with the help of Giselle Alvarez's, University of Washington-bound, three homerun, they prevailed 4-0. Getting to the championship game - that just shut down, there we go - was a goal the team set from the beginning of the playoffs. In front of a sold-out, energetic crowd, Los Alameda softball competed to the very end. They came up short in the bottom of the seventh, 5-4 to Eastvale Roosevelt. But these young ladies should be very proud of their accomplishment as the runner-up in the CIF, Southern Section Division One Softball. Well done, girls. I'm first going to call up our school board president, no, 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 school board member, sorry, Marla Davidson, she's going to do a presentation to the team.
Do we have captains, or can I have one person? They look like they have a stack of recognitions, I have one, or the coach? Hi, honey, thank you. So, we are very - no, come on over here. We're very excited to honor you for being such great representatives as Griffins. I can't even imagine what it must be like to get to a CIF final, that is absolutely outstanding. Amongst fierce competition, your program is nationally known. You consistently rank among the highest teams in the nation, and you got so far in this, and I'm so - we're so proud of you. And this certificate comes from the school board and the administration to thank you for making the Griffins look so fabulous, for giving your hearts. I - just as COVID ended, your games were the first ones I got to go to, and I couldn't even imagine what it was like because I was always the girl out on the field who said, "Please, God, don't let the ball come to me." And you all are fierce, determined, and courageous, and you work so well as a team. So, in honor of your efforts, the district, the school board, and the board and the administration would like to present you with the certificate of gratitude. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, honey.
Okay, I think we're first going to call up the coaches, and then we'll finish with the pretty section over here. Does that work? Okay, so first, head coach, Rob Wall. Congrats. Oh, no, stand up. Stay over here. Okay, we've got Jim, Coach Jim Costello. Congratulations. We have Coach Stan Brown. Haven't seen you for 20 years. Look at you. Coach Erin Kamara. Coach Holly Hernandez. Okay. Coach Janik Fettig. Okay. All right. Coach Neil Lockett? I'm butchering his names. And Coach Matty Sheal. Okay? And Coach Sean Neerman. Yay, there we go. Congratulations. All right, now come to the important stuff, and I apologize upfront for butchering any name. Mal Lemos Nero, manager. Did I butcher that? Oh, good, even better, okay. All right. Ange Maline? Okay. Oh, that's right, this was last - you're right. Alexis Montez. Yay! Congratulations. Ava Morales. Congratulations.
Y'all can stay up there because we'll have to take a picture.
Yeah, it's all about the pictures. Karina Nuez. College? All right. Alyssa Corey. All right, there we go. Congrats. Alyssa Ramos. Ally Robbins. College, okay. Isabella Rodriguez. Congratulations. Sydney Saldana. College, there we go. He's changing names, okay. Jazzy Santos. College, okay. Look at all these college kids. Diamond Seif? Seif? College, okay. At least I'm butchering their names, they're not here. Ooh, my, Natalie Zimborski. Yeah, all right. Congratulations. Gabby Toronas. Congratulations. Malena Toronas. You think they're sisters? Think so? Yeah, I think they're sisters. Congratulations. Berkeley Vance. Congratulations. Isn't that it? I think that's it. Oh, yeah, more, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, try me, there we go. Giselle Alvarez. Congratulations. Taryn Clements. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Stop moving. Malia Cuevas. Congratulations. Carrie Ferguson. Callie Fitzpatrick. Congratulations. Emma Haygood. College? I think we've got some college ones in here. Ollie Hebird? Heybird? Okay. College. Juliet Holcomb. Congratulations. You have a 1-6 spot of being in here. Cassidy Hornung. Nope. Cameron Johnson? Yes! And I'm assuming the rest are at college. Taylor Johnson? That's it? All right. Well, guys, congratulations so much. Like Marla said, that your program is nationally recognized, and you've worked hard, and you've gone through some trying times the past couple of years, and you still come out victorious, and very good. Come on in for a picture. There we go, awesome, thank you guys so much. Thank you, congratulations. Congratulations so much. Absolutely, congratulations. Come on, Bana. All right, and our next presentation is to code enforcement officers. If you guys want to go ahead, you can go. Trust me, it's not that exciting. Thank you. I should have made him sit through this, huh? Yes.
We love our code enforcement.
Yes, we do.
We got the best code enforcement.
All right, we're going to say some really nice things about you right now. So, code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of citizens in Los Alameda through the enforcement of local, state, and federal laws and ordinances. Code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified, and highly trained professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing communities, and ensuring safety, and preserving property values through knowledge, training, and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance laws. Code enforcement officers have a highly visible role in the community and regularly interact with the public. The City of Los Alameda wants to recognize and honor code enforcement officers that serve our community and acknowledge their role in the leading way, in the leading way to improve quality of life within our communities. We hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 be known as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Month and call upon its residents and business community to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service by the individuals who service at our code enforcement officers. So, come on up. I know part of your job, residents usually aren't happy when you knock on their door, and there is definitely a certain finesse that you have to handle. You do, you do? Hi, how are you? Hi. So, this is the group that keeps our neighborhoods pretty. Houses being painted hot pink, and grass and landscaping nice and trim. Thank you very much, you do a phenomenal job. We're doing a picture? Come on, Javier. All right, we're good, yeah?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. Come on up.
Hello, my name's Nicole Miller, and I would like to address the problem of the electric bikes in our city. I don't know who is technically in charge of that, if that's the police, if that's the city council, but there are three problems that I have with them, and I'd like to share them with you and find out how we can resolve them. The first problem is the speed that the kids are going, and the age of the people who are generally riding the electric bikes. I've seen them as young as eight, because my daughter's eight, and some of her friends have electric bikes, and they are riding them very unsafely in the streets and on the sidewalks, and at speeds that are far too high and very dangerous. The second point that I'd like to bring up is that there's really no code enforcement with the helmet thing going on, and that's worrisome for me. My kids obviously are not on the electric bikes, but I see a lot of children, and I'm worried about them getting hurt, honestly. And finally, I'd like to bring up that I want to know what the rules are, because there don't seem to be any rules, and nobody seems to be taking responsibility for this, and it's really making it unpleasant to drive around our city or walk around our city, because I'm getting run over, and I'm almost running people over, and I don't want to kill children. So, I just wanted to bring those things up and find out what you guys can do about it, what we as a city can do about it.
City manager, can you go ahead? I know we've been working with the police department and also the school district, so can you kind of give her an recap?
Of course, actually, and I think you'll be happy to know that this is something that actually our traffic commission is taking up. And I'll, to be perfectly frank, this is a multi-pronged approach. It's going to start with education, and it's going to be, that's why working with the school district is going to be so important. It's really trying to educate people as to what exactly those rules are. Second, where exactly we can enforce, and how we enforce, and what exactly the most productive method of enforcement is going to be. And then, I think, third is also, and this is going to be the hard part, is also some education to some of your, your, your
Peers?
Thank you, your peers, parents also, about what exactly their responsibilities are when their children are leaving the house with these bikes, because again, they travel at a high rate of speed, they are being used in ways that are not intended. But again, this is largely the same issue that we ran into when bikes were first introduced to the streets.
Yeah.
The difference here is the speed at which they're traveling, and the, the, I mean, really, the opportunity for something that might actually happen. And so, again, this is, like I said, a multi-paced approach, but the first step is really understanding what exactly the laws are that we have on the books right now. And I believe that we're actually going to have a presentation to our traffic commission, so if I can, I'll ask you to leave your number with the city clerk, and we can inform you when that meeting is going to happen, so that you can make sure that you're there, so that you can hear what they are discussing, and some of the options that are going to be presented to the city council for consideration.
That'd be wonderful, thank you so much.
Not a problem.
All right, anybody else? A shy group tonight, okay. I'll bring it back to council announcements and start with Mark.
Sure, it was a busy month, this last month. We, I attended the Los Alameda Community Foundation meeting, I believe it was last week, discussing many fundraising opportunities for the foundation. The foundation is putting on an event, Casino Night on November 12th, fundraising event where many games and prizes will be available. Priorities are to focus for, focus on fundraising for a police department K-9 program, an urban forest program, and an adaptive recreation program as well. So, we're looking forward to that. If anyone wants to register, we encourage you to on the Eventbrite website. There's a link on the City of Los Alameda's website as well. Attended Taste for Los Al. It actually was the first time I ever made it to Taste for Los Al, and it was an incredible event, a lot of fun, a great fundraiser for the high school sports and other programs as well, so that was great. Attended the Pacific Air Show, which was incredible. Took my family with me and got to see some really, really neat shows, and interact with a lot of people from the county and various cities as well. Mayor Hasselbrink was there, and Councilman Nofolda was there as well. Attended the Los Al Street Fair, got to sell some beer for the community foundation. Right after trying to run the 5K, my 10-year-old beat me handily in the 5K. Also ran the Glow in the Dark Fun Run the night before. Awesome events, as always, you know, every year. The city staff does a wonderful job, and this year was no exception, so it was really a lot of fun. And I saw a lot of people, you know, either from the neighborhood or from the school where my kids go that I had not seen before at community events, which is really encouraging. I think we're getting more, you know, a diverse group of people to come out to our events than we have in the past, so it's really remarkable. I attended, along with everybody else on the council, the memorial for Councilmember Bates, which was really a beautiful memorial. Really learned even more impressive things that he had done in his life, and it was really, you know, just an inspiring event, so wonderful event there. And that's about it? Thank you.
Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I also attended the memorial for Council Bates, and it was just great to see his family and his friends, and people speak so highly of him. Also attended the numerous events like Rais Los Al, the Street Fair, the Pacific Air Show, and it's really great, I agree, to see the community get together, participate in these events, and I look forward to more.
Mayor Protem.
I've been a busy little bee. I have my regular standing mosquito and vector control district meetings. I was able to attend the ribbon cutting for the new steam building over at the high school. Y'all, it is quite spectacular. They have like a outside, like auditorium, almost, where they can perform on the stairs, and you can sit on the grass and watch them perform, it's outstanding. Then they have like a nice little grassy knoll area if you want to have your lunch outside or write poetry, whatever you're into. I went to the League of California Cities meeting. That was a very mind-blowing three days. It, I think my greatest takeaway, the information that I got was outstanding, but our staff is second to none. We have the absolute best council, best staff, best police, best fire. Everything is the best here. I have some stories, it'd set your hair on fire. I was so happy to come home after those three days. I've been wanting to tell y'all I love y'all for a month and a half. I went to a new officer penning ceremony, I went to the youth center gala, raising money for the children. It was actually a very nice event, we had one of our dance studios, I cannot remember the name of it right now, but it's over there by the 7-Eleven, it's on the second story. They did such beautiful dancing. It was great, like even the owners got in on it, it was outstanding. The Chamber Heroes Appreciation Luncheon, if you haven't been able to make it to one of those, I would highly encourage you to go. It's so great, we honor all of our first responders and our essential workers, and it's such a well-put-on-and-thought-out event. I went to the State of the District. I went to the Glow Run, I got to have the very difficult job of judging costume contests. I don't recommend anybody try to judge the children contest, I dislike it greatly. I went to have coffee with a cop, and the Starbucks here on Cotella in Los Al, they had the most amazing presentation I've ever seen going to one of these events. The young man, I cannot remember his name, if one of y'all remember his name, throw it at me, but he staged it completely, like he used the blue and the black, and he had flowers, and he had squishmallows, and he sold me one. It was just such an outstanding time, the community came out, chief was on hand, being all warm and fuzzy as is his custom. Went to the retirement celebration for Chief Ron Roberts, and that was, it was really nice. It's always nice to be in a room where they're talking about an amazing man, and he's there to hear it, because like Mark said, we all attended the Celebration of Life for Ron Bates, and that was also pretty outstanding, because there's all of these people coming together and learning more about this phenomenal human being. I participated in the Pacific Air Show opening ceremony, y'all, they gave me a mic and a time limit, and I got to welcome everybody to Los Al, and I actually had some of our visitors guarantee me that they were going to go and stop at our coffee shops and our restaurants before they left, so I count that as a win. So then I also attended the air show over the weekend with my family. I'm not necessarily like a air person, right, like the planes and the helicopters and whatever, but this, it will take your breath away. I would suggest anybody just go, you don't have to be a superb, "I love airplanes!" You could just want to see something immaculate happen, and you definitely will if you go. And the, two more things, the Sunset Saturdays? Oh my gosh, I love them! They're so much fun. I see so many people, the diversity of vendors, the different people, they have stuff for the kids to do, they have adults, they got the beer garden, you cannot leave the beer garden with your beer. So, just get that out of your head now, you have to sit there and partake right there, but it's such a wonderful time, I'm so proud of Alicia and what she was able to put on. And then, this past week, I got to participate in the Elevate Women's Conference that the phenomenal Ms. Emeline Noda put on, and if she does it again, I would recommend that more, even more women come out, and men, you can just kind of sneak in, you know, put a cup to the door and listen in, because it really was a, I believe it was a life-changing event for the ladies that were able to make it in, so that's what I've been up to lately. That's it.
All right. Just to clarify, the reason that Mayor Protem Dobie had a microphone at the base is because I was uptown.
That doesn't matter, I was here to give a meeting.
But that's the reason. Anyway, yes, it's been a very busy few weeks for all of us, a lot of local things, which is just awesome. I was able to open up the St. Hedwig Autumn Fest, where I got to partake in tri-tip and funnel cake and corn on the cob. Very happy with that. Participated in the Glow Run, or at least judged the costumes. I did not run Los Al, but I got to push the button for the really loud horn to get everybody started, so I participated. The Pacific Air Show was just awesome. You know, there's something about standing on the beach with the Pacific Ocean in the background and watching these fighter jets fly over. It was absolutely phenomenal. And it's neat that the pilots request to stay at JFTB, they really like the accommodations there, and so we get our own private air show for three days when they're leaving and when they're coming back, so that's always really fun. I attended the Taste for Los Al event. I'm 10 years out of having any kids in high school, and it's still a whole bunch of fun, I just feel really, really old now. But it is a great fundraiser, you saw a lot of the restaurants come back, raised some good money. The silent auction is always worth going into. Attended the State of the District breakfast, that was always really informing, a lot of energy. Talked about the STEM building, my boys are very, very jealous, both coming in the science world. They can't wait to go back and see what they've done with that, which was always fun. And then also attended Ron's memorial service, which, like I say, it was a service like I've never been to. Cocktails and appetizers, and just really neat stories from family and friends. Did not realize that his entire wardrobe came from Costco. He was very proud of that. He was always dressed spiffy, so I guess Costco does okay in the, in the fashion world. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and actually, I just wanted to echo some of the comments that the council made with regards to code enforcement. It is a tough job and often a thankless job, and more and more code enforcement officers are being used as kind of the Swiss Army knife of city enforcement out there in the world. And three individuals that you saw here tonight are incredibly dedicated, but also incredibly talented at their job. It's a very tough skill to learn, to be able to tell somebody that they're not doing something exactly the right way and have them smile at you as you walk away. And all three of those individuals are very good at doing that, so I just wanted to, again, add my praise and admiration for what it is that they do on a daily basis. That's it for me, Mayor.
All right, and I missed a couple of things, because I'm having a rough night tonight, I'm not sure why. First of all, I spy our incoming new division chief from OCFA, he's over there in the corner. We promised not to harass him until he actually starts on Friday, but this is Chief Craig Covey. He's been with City Buena Park Fire and then OCFA since 1993, and he will be handling our city and promise to show him a good time. So, thank you. And then also, I just wanted to comment on the Elevate Conference, I put that on the last of my list because it was such an important thing, and I didn't even mention it. This conference, this was a dream of, of
Emeline.
Thank you. Emeline's a couple of years ago, and just watching this dream come true was just amazing. I mean, down to every detail, the decorations, the goodie bags, the women and who they sat next I mean, down to every detail, the decorations, the goodie bags, the women and who they sat next to and the connections that they made. And everybody walked out of there going, "I had no idea how much I needed this." And people that didn't go want to know when the next one is. So, that was really good. We plan on doing more of them, expanding it, and just making a connection for women in our city to just kind of be girlfriends, and I think that's really important. So, and now that's it. So, we will move on to warrants. Any questions? Can I have a motion, please? I'll second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Doby?
Aye.
Councilmember Chirko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nofolda?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, on to consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Mayor Protem Doby, you wanted to pull F? Okay. Anybody else want to pull any other items? Do you just have questions or...?
Yep, just questions.
Okay. Go ahead and do that, and then we'll do a motion for the entire.
So, I'm just wondering, because if I understand, all, we are up to, what do you like to call it? Compliment?
Full compliment.
And that includes our vehicle. So, I'm just wondering why the truck? What do we need a big, beautiful truck for?
I'm going to ask the acting chief to take that one.
Okay.
Mayor Protem, council, good evening. That's a great question. Currently, our fleet consists of Dodge Chargers, you know, vehicles, regular cars. We have the SUV, the Durango, and the F-150 platform. It's, look at it like a force multiplier. It does the job of a couple of different vehicles. So, it could be transporting our bike patrol team to a community event. It could be carrying all the gear necessary to do a DUI checkpoint. So, it really is a multi-purpose vehicle, and it is a phenomenal addition to our fleet. It allows us to be a little bit more efficient and it does the work of a couple of different cars. So, it's a pretty good deal, and it'll round out our fleet and capabilities quite nicely.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
That was it.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Seconds.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. On to the ordinance, 2022 Building Standards Code and Fire Code adoption. I believe this is Development Services?
It is. And largely, Mayor, this is an update that happens every three years to the building codes. We have staff and our contractors available in case anybody has questions. But, again, this is something that you go through every three years as the State of California updates its codes, and then we obviously adopt those in order to ensure that we're consistent across the board.
Do you need to read this first? It's an ordinance.
Yeah. Before taking action, I'd asked that I read this one, and I was, made sure to take a drink of water before doing this one because this is a good one.
Yeah, because it's long.
For your consideration this evening, our two ordinances. The first is ordinance number 2022-05 entitled, "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, Amending Chapter 15.04 of Title 15 of the Los Alamos Municipal Code and Adopting the 2022 Edition of the California Building Standards Code, Consisting of the 2022 California Administrative Code, the 2022 California Building Code, Including Appendix J, the 2022 California Residential Code, Including Appendices H and V, the 2022 California Electrical Code, the 2022 California Mechanical Code, the 2022 California Plumbing Code, the 2022 California Energy Code, the 2022 California Historical Building Code, the 2022 California Existing Building Code, the 2022 California Green Building Standards Code, and the 2022 California Reference Standards Code, Together with Certain Amendments, Additions, and Deletions, and Adopting the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code and the 2021 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, Together with Certain Amendments, Additions, and Deletions." The second ordinance for your consideration this evening is ordinance number 2022-06 entitled, "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, Deleting Chapter 15.08 of the Los Alamos Municipal Code and Adding a New Chapter 15.08, Adopting by Reference the 2022 Edition of the California Fire Code with Appendices and Amendments thereto."
Well done.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Can I get a motion?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. On to discussion item A, Creation and Funding of an Economic Development Fund, 57. All yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And this is largely an accounting function that we are looking to put into place. As the council recalls, last year, we started an actual economic development division within Development Services. This is a division that will be focused on growing our businesses, retaining our businesses, and attracting new businesses to town. Some of the efforts that they've undertaken so far would be Los Al Bucks, the Sidewalk Saturdays, also all the things that we do to promote businesses online, and then also all of the work that you've seen on Pine Street for some of those events in order to actually build business incubators. As time goes on, we would like to grow these type of endeavors in order to try and see what exactly this city can accomplish on the economic development front. Part of that is actually tracking what exactly we're spending and what exactly the return on that investment is. Obviously, we were granted some seed money from the American Rescue Plan Act. This would actually transfer that money into a special account so that we could actually track those efforts going forward.
Okay. I really like this for two things. One, it's using ARPA money, so we're not touching the general fund. And two, from what I remember, this is our city manager's wheelhouse, and I know what he did in his city, previous city that shall not be named, but he did a fabulous job. And, you know, I don't remember the last time we had an economic development department ever. So, I think it's time that we start paying attention to our businesses and start attracting new businesses. It's pretty easy to use a school district as attracting residents, but we need something to attract businesses, and I think this is a great start. So, any discussion from anybody? All right.
I'll move.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Last item, appoint a council member to serve as the alternate to the Orange County Sanitation District Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In conversations with the general manager at Orange County Sanitation District, we obviously are missing representation with the passing of Councilmember Bates. The idea would be to appoint a member of the council for the remaining term until the council reorganizes. The general manager did make it clear that there are a number of issues, heady issues, that are coming up for the Orange County Sanitation Board to weigh in on. And so, they did ask for members that maybe have past experience in order to take over that role here in the short term with an eye towards possibly being able to continue into the future.
Okay. Anybody have any interest?
I have interests, no experience.
I have experience, but no, I'm just kidding. I'll be off the council in December, so it probably doesn't make sense to appoint me. I'm okay with Councilmember Nofolda if he's got interests.
There's two meetings a month. The main board meeting is on Wednesdays. In Fountain Valley, right now, they're meeting Zoom until they legally are allowed to do that, but from what I understand, the governor is not going to extend that ability in February? It's going to expire in February?
I'm going to let the city attorney take that one.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's information I received this afternoon was that the governor's emergency orders expected to lapse in February.
Okay. And then there's, so as a board member, there would be once a month, and then also every board member serves on a committee that also meets once a month. So, is that something you're interested in doing? Okay.
And they will often try to schedule those other meetings the same day, if they can, the same day as your board meeting. So, if you go in person, ideally, you would only have to go down there once a month, but it's not guaranteed.
And it's Wednesday, right?
It's Wednesday, yeah. Wednesday at 6 o'clock for the board, and I think 5 o'clock is for the committees.
That is correct.
All right. You interested? I'll move that one.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, you're on a committee. All right. And with that, I think we're going to be adjourning until Monday, November 14th.
No.
No?
Monday. Monday. Regular.
Oh, regular meeting, Monday, November. We have a special meeting on Monday, the 24th. Thank you.
You are adjourning to Monday, November 14th. We do have a special meeting next Monday, the 24th.
Perfect. What she said. Perfect. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.